Up here gives us about one second. Are we good to go? All right. I hereby call the Planning Commission meeting of January 20th, 2021 to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get into our regular business, I would like to introduce to the rest of the Planning Commission and the community, Mr. Thomas Marvin. He's the newest Planning Commissioner, and this will be his first meeting tonight. So, thank you very much for serving, Mr. Tom, Mr. Marvin. I appreciate, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to go into some notes. So pursuant to Section 7 and Section 10 of the Declaration of Emergency Directive 021, there will be no in-person attendance at this meeting again. The public, however, may view the meeting live at the following link. And you know what? I'm not going to read the link because it seems that if you're not watching it now, me stating it probably won't make any difference. So, anyway. However, there will be an opportunity for, a couple of opportunities for public comment. And we do have three agenda items today. One of them is a public comment, and you'll have the opportunity to weigh in then. And we do have an initial public comment period that I think I'll just start right now. And so... There we are. And so if you're interested in commenting on items listed on tonight's agenda, you can call into the meeting at 702-589-9629. And we'll pause for a minute to allow folks to call in if interested. Well, that's been a little bit over a minute. I think we'll close the initial public comment period and go to our first order of business. So being the January meeting, it's, uh, it's the first item for action is election of officers, and we will select a chairman and a vice chairman tonight. Do we have any recommendations?
I'd nominate Paul Matuska for chairman.
I'll second that.
I would accept that. Thank you. And I think we need to vote.
Do you just ask if there are any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, then you are thereby elected as chairman.
I apologize to anyone else who's waiting. Do we have any other nominations? Looks like I won't move my seat tonight. Let's nominate a, do we have any nominations for vice chairman? I would like to nominate Nate Lassoff, if I may.
If there are no other nominations, I'll second that.
And do you accept?
I'll take it if nobody else wants it.
We knew we could count on you. Thank you very much. Thank you. So first order of action tonight then after election, or second order of action then is approval of the minutes of the November 18th meeting. Do we have any recommendations?
If there are no comments, I'll move to approve. I'm sorry, sorry. Ernie Biaski, there are no other comments, I'll move to approve.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So for the next order of business, item number three on the agenda is V-18631 from Donna Saunders of 1315 Alpine Drive. And this is a public hearing on an application to reapprove and revise a previously approved but expired variance in the R15, R115 single-family residential zone for an addition with a side street setback of 10 feet, 10 feet, 6 inches, whereas Section 11-3-5 Point C of the city code requires a side setback of 20 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As that summary indicates, this variance was previously approved back in 2018, and the owner is just now coming forward with the plans for this garage expansion. And as the report notes, or actually, if the plans came forward exactly as they were previously approved, this would still have to come back to the Planning Commission for reapproval of an expired variance because the code presently states that a permit must be obtained within 180 days, otherwise the variance becomes void. In this case, however, a full reapproval is required because the plans came back slightly changed, and now the addition is a little bit larger, and that includes the portion that is at the reduced setback. So you've got the plan in the file, and that, you know, that shows the area of that garage expansion, and it shows the comparison of the sizes between 2018 and now. And basically, it's become almost 3 and 1/2 feet wider, but it has also become 3 and 1/2 feet taller. It still complies with height requirements and lot coverage and all other standards. It's just that now the commission needs to consider reapproval of the same variance but for a slightly larger addition than previously proposed. Since otherwise, all of the other conditions are the same, the staff report is pretty much the same as it was before. The only difference now is that staff is recommending conditional approval with the standard condition that we now make a part of all variances that the approval pertains to the information that you're reviewing and discussing at this meeting, such that if plans change in the future, it doesn't automatically entitle somebody to something that is larger or encroaches more into that variance than what the Planning Commission viewed. So that's exactly what this condition is meant for. I'll take any of your questions, and then the applicant, we can contact by phone for you to ask any questions of her.
I have a question. Being there was a change from the initial application. Procedurally, does that make any difference in terms of approving it now?
No, it's still the same variance approval procedure. The Planning Commission must find in favor of all five variance criteria. And as you read through the criteria, the size of it wasn't an issue. You know, the size or height weren't a factor. The issue was the setback. It is still the same setback. It's just that slightly, slightly more of the addition will now be within the setback.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Susan, because of the right-of-way being 60 feet there, I see the measurements from the property line. Do we know what the measurements are from the back of sidewalk to where the new addition's going to be? Is, is that?
It's 10 and 1/2, excuse me, the 10 point...
10 feet, 6 inches from the property line.
10 foot, 6 inches from the property line. And the drawings in the file here, let's see, the drawing doesn't mention, it shows the retaining wall is within the right-of-way.
Right.
And then the memo.
I was looking for that, and I didn't see it through the material.
The property line, the distance to the curb for this site is 18 feet, which is much deeper than normal, because that was the point of the memo from July 2018, is that although this is a 60-foot right-of-way, which was standard for that time, the road was, the road itself is not a standard road, and it is not centered within the right-of-way. So the point of that memo was to show that in terms of comparing it to typical streets, that the relative setback is really not much different than in other subdivisions because of that large distance between the property line and the curb.
What I'm trying to get at is, is it 20 feet visually from back of sidewalk, even though it's not?
That's really impossible to say, especially due to the grade change there.
Right, it's a massive grade change.
There's a, you know, two-story, two-story tall retaining wall right along the road. So I can't estimate that. Perhaps the applicant could attempt to answer that.
Okay, thank you.
May I interject? Because I think I can answer your question. Just looking at the table on the memorandum, I think it's, as noted in the package, it's 10 point, or 10 feet, 6 inches from the property line, and it looks like the property line's about 18 feet from the curb. Was that kind of your question? So it'd be about 28, well, and then the bottom line, 28 point...
28 and 1/2 feet from back of sidewalk to the building?
From the curb to the proposed building.
For the sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're still well within that 20 feet from the back of curb.
Or back of sidewalk, even.
Visually is what I'm getting at. Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions of Susan? All right.
If not, Tammy, would you mind giving our applicant a call? Thank you.
Hi, this is Donna.
Hi, Donna, it's Tammy at the Planning Commission meeting, and you are on speakerphone.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Donna, and thank you for making yourself available. This is Paul Matuska of the Planning Commission. And I think what we would like to know, so first, let me ask you, have you been watching the proceedings so far?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Do you have anything else you'd like to add? Maybe, I don't know, anything to... Anything in addition perhaps to the, um, to the statement you've already put into our package? Or, you know, that we've already read?
No, I think that one of the concerns I heard was about how far we were from, from the sidewalk, but we, we are on an elevated pad about a good 15 feet off of the ground. So it doesn't change how close we go to the driveway or the, the road, or there's, actually, there is no sidewalk out there. So it's, it's still just all contained within our little backyard, if you will.
All right. Let me turn to the commission members. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Well, I, I think with that, we sincerely appreciate your time. Because this is an item that has a public comment opportunity, I don't know if we'll be able to keep you on the line. In fact, I don't think we'll be able to keep you on the line. So Donna, we appreciate your time this evening, and we'll return to the, to the public comment period.
Okay, thank you very much.
Bye-bye. And this is the public hearing portion?
Yes, yes. Oh, right. So let's move to the public hearing portion. So for those who are watching this livestream and would like to make a comment, again, the number to call into is 702-589-9629. And we'll pause for a minute to give an opportunity to call in. All right, hearing no comments. I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for recommendations and ultimately a vote. So, does anyone have comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion to approve variance... Where'd that number go? V-18631 to conditionally approve the variance subject to staff's findings.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's bring it back, and does anyone have any comments, any discussion? Well, all right, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion passes. And the variance passes. Moving on to item number four of our agenda for possible action. This pertains to Storybook Homes, so it's Storybook Boulder LLC, Resolution Number 1199, Boulder Hills Estates, Boulder City Number 113, Unit 3, located at the southeast corner of Adams Boulevard and Bristol Cone Drive. And this is a recommendation to City Council on a final map for Unit 3 of the approved subdivision consisting of 40 lots in the R17 zone and R110 single-family residential zone. Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The overall subdivision will be 127 lots, and this third and last phase, as noted, is for 40 lots, and that consists of 27 in the R17 zone, and then the only lots that are zoned are 110 in the entire subdivision, and there's 13 of those. And I'm sure most of you have been by the development as it's been going on. Unit 1 is nearly complete. They're leaving the last two lots either side of the models open until the final phase of development. And Unit 2 is, you know, steaming right along under construction. And Unit 3 is being purchased by the applicant per the prior land sale agreement. And basically, the approval process can move forward at this time while the city still owns the property. The city just simply will not be signing the final map milars for recordation until closing on the property has occurred because the map state Storybook is the owner. And the staff report goes over all of the prior approvals for this development. Just briefly summarizing, it's a neighborhood that does have private streets, and a couple of variances were approved previously. The only variance affecting a lot in this phase is just one of the corner lots is at a slightly reduced width per a prior variance approval. The city had granted various permissions and had requirements of the developer over the prior phases of the development, and that is summarized in the report as well. And basically, the final map for this third unit does substantially conform to the approved tentative map. There were minor changes to some of the lot areas, but they all, the areas and widths all meet or exceed the code requirements for the R17 and R110 zone as previously approved. The Planning Commission only sees the, what we call the final map, which is the legal document that will get recorded, which is basically showing all of the lot lines and easements, its streets, et cetera. What you don't see are all of the construction drawings for the infrastructure of the development. And reviewing that relative to what the Planning Commission saw at the tentative map stage, the grading is pretty much conforming to what was previously shown at the tentative map stage. And as the property, you know, goes downward from Adams Boulevard to the south, there will be significant retaining walls within the development between the lots as there are now. The only focus staff has ever made is on the impact adjacent to the lots that exist to the east and the south. And with regard to that, the grading is only slightly changed. Nine of the lots that, those neighboring lots have slightly higher pad grades, but the highest increase was only by 1.1 foot, and all of the other increases were less than 6 inches. And in terms of the walls, all of the lots will have your standard 6-foot yard walls alongside and rear property lines. Many, if not most, of the lots are going to have retaining walls below that so that the walls will be higher on one side. And relative to the abutting neighborhoods to the east and south, the improvement plans show the retaining walls next to those lots at either the same or lower heights than what was provided to the Planning Commission and City Council at the tentative map stage. So the attached resolution contains all the necessary conditions for approval, including the standard item that if there remain any corrections to be made to the improvement plans or map prior to signature, that those will be made. The map has now been fully satisfied. I believe there were just minor corrections to the improvement plans that were needed, and they may have already been taken care of. So with that, I'll take any of your questions. And again, we have an applicant, a representative of Storybook Homes, available to answer any questions.
I have a question, Susan, and this is really just clarification and confirmation. According to our package, it looks as though, and really what you've just stated is that the applicant is meeting all the criteria that they had promised to do. There obviously any variances that were provided, he's living within those. The final map has not changed substantively from the initial map. As you point out, a few elevation changes within, really in essence, within a foot. So it sounds like the applicant is in fact meeting all the criteria that the city, through really months almost of negotiation with, with the community, have, have required of the contractor, correct?
Yep, they've been a good partner to work with on this project, you know? And my department also deals with all of the building permits for the homes and everything else, and that has been a very smooth procedure as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for city staff? Well, why don't we turn it over? Whoops, why don't we call the applicant, if you would please, Tammy?
Hi, this is Isaac.
Hi, Isaac, it's Tammy at the Planning Commission meeting. You're on speakerphone, and I'm going to turn it over to Chairman Matuska.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Isaac, and thank you for making yourself available for us this evening.
Absolutely, good evening to you guys.
Thank you. I don't know whether or not you've listened to the city staff's report, to Susan's report, or have read the package that we're looking at. Ultimately, I'm going to ask if you have anything further to add regarding this request.
I think, thank you very much for you guys considering this, this item tonight. I think Susan covered a lot of the details behind this. Certainly, this is the, the third parcel out of the parcel 349, which was divided up into three sub-parcels. We've, we've since purchased 1 and 2, and this is just the subsequent purchase and final purchase for parcel 349, what we're calling Unit 3. So this is going to allow us to finish out our development here. This, this unit has 40 lots, and we're looking forward to rolling right into this and, and continuing to build the product that we have there and, and working with Boulder City and making this a successful project, and it's, and it's been just that so far. So again, I appreciate it. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions any of the Planning Commission might have.
Thank you very much. Going back to the commission, does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Well, all right then. Mr. Biaski?
If there are no other conditions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Let's finish, we'll, we'll...
I'm jumping the gun.
Excuse, that's okay. At least we know where you're at. So, Isaac, it looks like there are no questions. And so I think with that, I would say thank you very much for, again, for making yourself available to the commission this evening. And I guess I would say this, it sounds like city staff feel that you all are a pleasure to work with, so thank you very much for that.
Likewise, yes, thank you guys very much.
That being said, thank you, and we'll move back to move this item, or I'm sorry, that'll end the applicant's discussion. This item does not have a public hearing associated with it. I guess I would look towards staff. Is there any need that you can imagine for a public hearing? Because I'm frankly not really inclined to go that way.
Well, basically...
I'm sorry? No, I, I think that he may be excused. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good night.
The city code doesn't require a public hearing because the state doesn't require a public hearing. As I summarized recently for our new planning commissioner, when a developer or any private party owns a piece of land, and you choose to develop it, and if you meet all of the local regulations for development of that land, by law, that must be approved. And that's the point of a tentative map, is so that, you know, the developer and the community can agree on the basic layout, and, you know, how that project will interrelate to other streets and other neighborhoods, et cetera. And that once that tentative map is approved, it gives the developer the legal right to move forward with the final map. And as long as that is in accordance with the tentative map, you know, any, any member of the public, you know, can make comment on that type of thing, but it's not as if it would prevent this matter from being approved as it must be by law. So therefore, while the city does notify surrounding neighbors within 300 feet at the tentative map stage, which is beyond what state law requires, because they don't require any notification, we do not require or do any noticing at the final map stage, because it could mislead the public to think that their providing input might be able to change a decision, which in this type of situation, when everything is in accordance with all of the codes, must be approved. So it is optional for the chairman to open up any item for public comment, but that is entirely to discretion, and because this development conforms to all codes, there is no need to.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate that explanation. So that all being said, we'll move it back to the commission and a motion.
I will step on Ernie's feet and make a motion to approve Resolution 1199, and make that recommendation.
I'll second the approved, or motion.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments on the part of the commission? In that case, I'll bring it to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay?
You said nay?
No, I just, what I meant is, say nay. I'm going to have to work on this. It sounds like it was approved, and we'll close that item and go on to item number five, monthly progress report on development allotments.
At this point, all of you who've been here for many years know that I just normally say no comment, because it's just simply a report. But I heard some commenting, you know, over in the gallery on the side here about allotments, so I will make it a point to ask if any of you have any questions about the allotment report. Okay.
Any questions? Hearing none. It sounds like the no comment stands, which brings us to our final public comment period. During this final comment period, each person has up to five minutes to speak. Comments made during the public comment period of the agenda may be on a new subject, and all remarks shall be addressed to the planning commission as a whole, not to any individual member of the planning commission. And with that, I open up for the final public comment period to the community, and once again, the number is 702-589-9629, and we'll give you a minute. Hearing no comments, I will end the final public comment period, and just want to say on closing, my thanks to each of the planning commissioners for your service to the community. So thank you very much, and we hereby close the meeting of January 20, 20th, 2021. Thank you.